I call the meeting no order. Everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited and just as for all. The New Jersey open public meeting law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Here.
Ms. Amiga.
Here.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Here.
Mr. Shoner.
Here.
Mrs. Dai.
Here. Comments on items on the agenda. Seeing none? Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
How's it going?
Good, good.
Fantastic. I just want to apologize for us being 12 minutes late. Zach just does that sometimes, but we move on. So, moving on quickly, committee reports. Anybody do anything?
Yes.
Go anywhere?
I went to the North End FSA meeting on the 16th, which I think was on Thursday. And let's see, save the date. The art show is scheduled for April 30th from 3:15 to 6:00. Let me see. Oh, the board positions for the North End FSA are up, so they want people to come out for it and see what it's all about. Their two-year term was up, and it goes really, really fast, so that's something they wanted to know. Oh, the calendar raffle tickets are due on, is Friday the 24th?
It might be.
Yes.
Friday, whatever day the 24th is, that's when all of your calendar raffle tickets are due, so get them in. And if you haven't purchased any, purchase them, because there's 90 chances to win for $10.
Oh, wow.
And where can people purchase them?
Yes.
Um... Okay.
Call me, because I have some.
I thought that was going to be an easy answer. I apologize for setting you up.
No, who, who? North End, call North End. I know they have a whole bunch sitting, waiting to be purchased, so, and call me, because I can get them, too.
Okay.
I have a North Ender. Um, blah, 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 blah. And kindergarten report cards, February 7th. They're coming out.
Okay. When does the market period end?
Yeah, I was going to say, do they work?
I don't have the exact date.
I'm just setting everybody up for failure tonight.
Friday?
The high school kids now.
Oh, okay.
The high school kids. So, yeah, lots of...
Thanks.
Oh, and Gertrude Hawk, everybody knows Gertrude Hawk. That's happening in mid-February, so that's another fundraiser for North End. Lots of good stuff happening in North End.
Fantastic. Anybody else?
No.
All right, well, I went to the middle school FSA meeting last Monday, the 13th, and what was everybody talking about? Esports. So, they're getting their esports program off the ground for the 7th and 8th graders. Forty-eight students were interested, which is, which is great. Their goal for next year is to involve 5th through 8th. One of the considerations is that some of the games aren't appropriate for 5th and 6th graders, so they're kind of working on that. But thanks to the middle school FSA, who supplied all the funding to get it off the ground, which is fantastic and exciting, and it would be nice if that could carry over into the high school at some point, so...
Just saying.
Yeah, just saying.
It would be nice.
If anybody's got thousands of dollars to fund that, that'd be great.
Well, I will tell you that, that they are, on March 26th, they're taking 25 kids are going down to Asbury Park.
Yes.
To attend the esports and esports seminar about, about it.
Yes, I heard that. That's exciting.
Yes, it's high school, the high school is.
Very cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it would be nice if the funding became available to continue that, but it's budget season, we can wish, right?
Maybe there's an APT parent who can help.
Right, grants. Maybe.
Any grants?
Maybe.
Well, you know, actually, it's interesting you do, you say that, because I think Mr. Decort was given some information on grants.
Yeah, right. So, if somebody wanted to take the initiative on that, that would be a good thing, because that would be great to continue that. And that's kind of how sort of the technology thing has worked. It kind of had started at the middle school, and then we kind of dragged it along at the high school, and we've come very far at the high school technology.
With great success.
Yeah, no, it's pretty amazing. So, anyway, moving on, I just thought that. And then, and then TRAPS is March 1st. It's a Sunday, it's 4 to 6. It's going to be at the high school. I hope so. Invites to come. Yeah, so it's TRAPS, so that's exciting. So, that's my time at the middle school FSA. All right, moving on, and that's why we have, who we have here is the board presentation for the football team participation in Orlando, which is kind of cool and exciting. So, Mr. Gogarty.
Yes.
You have the floor. Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fantastic.
So, we're going to, we're going to get them coming up to the mic and talking about it.
All right.
Very good, we're all right.
Little public speaking.
Love it.
Everyone's going up? You look like a deer in headlights, my friend, all right.
Yeah, sure, why not? Yeah, you can hold it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I, I have seven of my 10 seniors here with me. Three are playing basketball at Week Wake right now, so that's why the other three aren't here. But we have a unique experience or opportunity to travel for a football game. We've kind of, I kind of did some looking into this almost a year ago, you know, I kind of brought up the idea to someone but didn't really know how to go about it. Then we kind of went through our football season, we had a great season, and, and we have a great core of young men coming back, and, and that's why I kind of put my foot on the gas a little more than I probably would, because I respect the guys I have coming back. It's a really mature group who can really kind of accept this challenge. So, we kind of found, or they found us a little bit, too, this KSA event group, which I'll talk about, who will travel with and things like that. But we want to present a KSA kickoff classic game, September 4th, which would be our first game of the season. So, it would be a real game, it would count for a record, playoffs, PowerPoints, and things like that. And, and I thought I was going to be in the clear, because we weren't going to miss school, but...
Amazing how that happened, isn't it?
Yeah, but, but we may be missing the first two of the, you know, the two of the first three days there. Just a few of the goals for doing this. Obviously, it'll strengthen our, you know, schedule a little bit. We play tough teams here, it kind of brought in the opportunity. Our Week 1 game is always free and open, so we played David Brearley last year, which was out of conference, it was a consolation game, so we kind of have that week open to play a game. So, when this came along, this was the date, we were kind of looking at it, kind of strengthens our schedule, gives us opportunity to play something different. Obviously, I think it's a once-in-a-lifetime team bonding experience, something that's never been done within our football program. It's definitely the, the first time we, we would try something like this. So, so it's unique, I think, in that way. I think with the commitment thing, I'll go to vouch for them. Football season's a grind, you know, just like any other sport. Starting in June, really, there, there, there are five days a week. You know, then, once we get into our season, we're six, my coaches are seven days a week, things like that. So, it kind of is an extra, you know, commitment and an extra, you know, plus to kind of do something like this. I think it strengthens our program as well, you know, I think, you know, football is in a weird place right now in general, not in just in Cedar Grove, I think in general, with, with the participation numbers from the younger groups all the way to high school are, are, are declining.
They are declining.
At a rapid pace, and I think it's something that, that schools and teams are doing to, you know, attract a little bit. The game has become so much safer with, with the upgrade in equipment, the rules, the, even some of the tactics. So, so, so doing something like this is also a program strengthening thing, you know, showing some little kids that, wow, you know, the high school's taking a big-time trip game, and that's kind of where that showcase comes in. It gives us our players to have that little college game feel to it a little bit, where we're traveling overnight for what I call a business trip a little bit, because we are going there to play a game and, and, and not just to, you know, you know, have a good time, but, but, but we do want to have that with it. A little bit about KSA, because that's the event group we would be traveling with and for. So, KSA is one of the largest school sporting events group. They run a kickoff classic kind of all over the country, and they do a few weeks in Florida, starting with two weeks prior to when we're going. So, we would be part of their KSA kickoff classic events. You know, a little bit about them, they are a scholarship group, nonprofit group, volleyball, lacrosse, football, basketball events, AAU events. The more I found out, this is the first time I kind of heard about them and looking into it, they are huge. The lady we've been working with is, I feel like she's in a different state every time I talk to her with, with, with something going on. They provide competition that brings together teams who would otherwise never meet on the field, which I think is a cool experience, and they even set up, you'll see in the itinerary, they kind of set up celebration parties and pre-game parties, almost with other teams and things like that, to kind of celebrate that different type of competition. And they want to create a once-in-a-lifetime message and, and, and event for, for these guys like that. And you'll see when they kind of talk about it and in there, they kind of set us up and run us through everything, which I think is awesome. It's very detailed plan, and they do a great job. We actually had a representative come, come here a few weeks ago and meet with our players and parents and really talk about the experience and talk about the trip with us.
All right, so, my name's Tyler Romo, and as Coach said, we'll be playing September 4th, 2020, at 7:00 PM at Orangewood Christian High School in Maitland, Florida. We'll be staying at the Cabana Bay Beach Resort in Universal Studios. It's going to be a four-day trip, three nights. And while we're on that trip, they provide with us, that comes in the payment, multiple meal plans, and I'll, two-day park, two-day park passes for Saturday and Sunday, and like a ton of other options that we could do while we're preparing for the game. So, my friends will explain the rest of that. So, Thursday morning is the day that we're going to fly out from Newark to Orlando, and once we get there, KSA will welcome us to their event. After that, we're going to have a practice before the game at the facility they have. Then we're going to check into our rooms. After that, we're going to go have dinner at Kobe Steakhouse, and depending on what time the dinner ends, we will go and check into our rooms and go to sleep.
On Friday, we're going to have breakfast as a team. Then, after that, we're going to have a team movie and bonding session as a team, and then we're going to rest before the big game in Florida, and then a pre-game meal and a team meeting before our game, and then us versus Orangewood Christian High School, then it's a post-game meal after the game, and then a room check and the lights out.
Saturday, Saturday morning after the game, we're going to go to breakfast as a team and with the coaches, and right after that, we're going to have a few coaching, coaches' meetings between the coaches and us to go over the game, what we did, what we need to work on and all that. All good, hopefully. After, after the meeting, we're going to, there's going to be a lot of time to go in the parks, have a lot of fun, maybe meet some other kids from other teams, which we probably wouldn't be able to do any other times, we could make new friends and stuff like that. Also, after the parks, there's going to be something similar where you can meet other players. There's going to be all the other teams that were there, at like a big celebration, a big banquet, which I think will be pretty cool to make, make friends with them, and like every night, room checkout and lights out.
All right, so Sunday's going to be the last day, you know, we're going to have breakfast, we're going to pack up, and then we're going to check out, and then, depending on the time, hopefully, we can have a little more team bonding at the Universal Theme Park, and then we'll fly out that night.
So, you're probably wondering how we're like going to be able to afford this and like...
Yes.
And stuff. So, right now, we're doing a January calendar. Basically, what it is, is for every day of the week, you ask like somebody to donate like that number, so like for the first day of January, donate $1, all the way to the 30th, donate $30. So, that alone gets us basically $500 for our, for our trip. Then we have a bunch of other things like calendar raffles, which is like just good, like everybody can win something, there's a really good chance, can shakes, and then there's a beef steak where we'll probably make a lot of money. That, and that stuff right there will probably just cover the cost of everybody, and if we do need something, we have a bunch of stuff lined up before the final day to fundraise. So, the travel plan that we're going to be using is a dual, is a dual occupancy plan, and it will cost about $1,600 per player, and all of our, all of our fundraising efforts are being run by the players and the Touchstone Club.
And just to kind of recap a little bit with that, a lot of we've, we've, we're kind of pushing towards that dual, I think you saw the dual occupancy thing. It was kind of, they kind of set you up either four people in a room, three people in a two people room. The price difference wasn't huge, so we're trying to, our goal is to get the dual. I figure we're going there, we're, we're raising a pretty good amount of money. I'd rather everyone sleep in a bed and not, you know, sleep on a floor or kind of squeezed into a bed with four people in there. So, our goal is that dual occupancy, which is about $1,600. There wasn't a huge difference between that, so that's why we're setting that as that goal there. We have 32 returning players, so we're inviting all returning players, grades 10 through 12. You know, part of the reason is I know them, they know the program, we've kind of gone through that. There's a lot of planning that has already taken place a little bit, and, and like I talked about with program stability, is I didn't want to leave anyone out by including, you know, incoming freshmen and stuff like that. We actually have 14 freshmen play for us this year, and only about six of them played Pop Warner football. So, I felt like if I went to them too early, I was going to lose someone who might have been thinking of playing football. We have 14 great freshmen who, who are all returning towards us. So, I didn't want to, you know, someone who might not be thinking about playing football until March, April, or May to be discouraged by coming out saying, oh, they had their meeting already, they're, you know, their team's set, they're going to Florida, things like that. So, that was part of the reason, too, and I think, you know, these guys have been in this program, I think it's a unique opportunity, hopefully, we do it again, and things like that. So, so there's about 32 returning players, we're going, seven board-approved coaches will be the chaperones. We do, our, we, we are planning with our fundraising and total cost to bring our trainer at, as, as well. September 3rd to September 6th, that game day would be on that Friday, we would actually be playing, so their kickoff classic runs at multiple events, but the team we're linked up with right now, we would actually be playing at their home high school, which I think is a cool and, cool thing, because it's a true away game. I think their fans will be there, their, their normal school population will be there, rather than playing something at like a neutral site where it's not, you know, I, I think it's going to draw a little bit more people there, which I think is cool. Three nights, four days. A lot of what you saw in the trip accommodations is all included in that price. Everything is included besides for one meal, and that's that Saturday lunch park day. So, so, you know, that private dinner on Thursday night at, at, at the Kobe Steakhouse, that's included. Three breakfasts.
So, Coach, is that just our team that has that? Is that the dinner?
Yes, yes, it's, it's, it's just our team, and they invite our travel group. So, so if their parents are coming, grandpas and things like that, it's unique just to our group, it's included in that price. So, it's not like we're, you know, we need extra fundraised money for breakfast, for lunch, for dinner. Everything's kind of included within those meals, and I set up that, that itinerary, it's pretty straightforward through KSA on there with that. You know, even the movie theater, the day of the game, it's hot down there, so they try to keep you inside the day of the game, so that's included, things like that. And obviously, like, I think Antonio mentioned, the two-day park pass, which we can utilize on Saturday and Sunday as that extra, you know, perk, I guess, there. And our goal is obviously to fundraise the $1,600 per person. Our January calendar raffle has already been done, so I want to say the majority of the guys who did it have at least $496 credited to their account. One of the players hit it out of the park, they got $900 just by that January fundraiser, so, so they're ahead of the game. We're actually doing a calendar raffle, just like the FSA you mentioned, a plug there, and then our, so a few can shakes and beef steaks. So, that's what we have set up right now. We're hoping that those cover that $1,600 there with a little wiggle room and things like that.
My only question is, who's our substitute trainer? If you're taking Coach...
Yeah.
We would treat it just, we would treat it just like we do if she's out sick or something like that, so we would get Jag or SD Game Day.
Okay.
Who, who, who fills in. It's good, because it's kind of not a, there's not a lot of scrimmages, the scrimmages are done, it's kind of right before.
Right.
The season starts up, so...
Okay.
So, so really, we'll only have practices going on and things like that.
Awesome.
Yeah, so you guys would come back Sunday, and Monday's actually Labor Day.
Monday's Labor Day, which is kind of a little buffer, yeah.
Right.
That's kind of nice, yeah.
Before school starts on Tuesday. That's why, originally, I thought it was great, you know?
Right. Perfect timing.
Yeah.
Right.
Would you go to the theme park? Do the coaches go to the theme park?
Yeah, we're going to, yeah, we have, you know, I, I, my, my mind works a little crazy. I'm already thinking of doing a scavenger hunt type of thing, you know, during that, stuff like that, where, where, where we'll keep it to...
They look thrilled by that. We went on the park.
Do things a little bit, so we'll keep it, you know, fun and keep it organized. I kind of like to be organized with everything with that, and, and even that night is when they do the celebrations event in the park.
Okay.
So, like, we'll kind of wrap up that night kind of there. It's, 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 it's kind of a dinner where other teams will be there, and you kind of, you know, wrap it up at that night there.
Nice. Awesome.
Great.
I'm sure you guys will be broken up about missing, you know, a couple days of school, especially at the beginning, but I think it's probably well worth it, so this is great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excited for you guys, seriously.
Oh, and you've never done this before? This is...
We've never, yeah, it's, you know, it's a little bit outside my boundary here, but, you know, it's, you know, we have, we have a good group this year, and it kind of solidified, and I brought up the idea to my Touchstone Club president last June or May, you know, the group we had this year just kind of solidified that, you know, we're all going to try it out, and, you know.
That's great.
We're still going down there to play a game.
Right, right.
Right.
And it's hot. It's really hot in Florida in September.
What?
What was the question?
Well timed, very well timed, very nice.
We'll get back to you.
Yeah, because it's three days, and then, you know...
Well, yeah, but they're only missed, they'd only be missing two.
Yeah. They're all going to show up for the first day of school, of course, right?
Of course.
Yeah. Okay.
Get a total of 13.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'm going to allow you guys go, because you don't want to really listen to the rest of this, and...
Yeah, and good job on the presentation.
Yes, thank you. Actually, that was actually great.
That was fabulous.
It was really great that you actually participated.
And everybody spoke, so, all right. Very nice. Guys, have a good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, guys.
Go home and study, everyone.
Take it easy.
Bye-bye, Coach. Good night.
Oh, and it's pause up now? Is that the new hashtag?
I know, I like that. Pause up.
I, I love it. We're going to start it.
I like it.
Amiga's going to start using it left and right on her social media.
I like it.
Oh.
Oh.
Quiz one of them and see what the meaning is.
Yeah, can we quiz one of them? Oh, great, okay.
All right, we're moving on. All right, so that was our board presentation. That's pretty exciting, by the way.
That was exciting.
Boy, and I bet, I bet Gogarty was, felt pretty foiled when he realized we were going back to school for Labor Day weekend. I bet he had it all planned out, they weren't going to miss any school, it was perfect timing.
Probably lost them all.
Yeah, it's amazing how September just kind of fell the way it did.
Knock up on you.
Oh, moving on. Okay, so now we'll have our public hearing, and if there are any comments on the superintendent's contract, and then seeing none, I'm going to close that portion of the meeting, right? And we're going to move on. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, can I have, under minutes, can I have a motion for B1 through B3?
So moved.
Second.
B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of January 7th. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of December, and B3 is a motion to approve the board secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Ed pursuant to the code. Any discussion?
No.
No. Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Ms. Amiga.
Yes.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes, under bills, can I have a motion for B4?
So moved.
Second. B4 is a motion to pay the list of bills that were in our packet dated January 17th. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Ms. Amiga.
Yes, but I have seen from check number 060305.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under business, can I have a motion for B5 through B8?
So moved.
Second.
B5 is a motion to approve the location agreement with Kyle and Ting, NYU student, and the Cedar Grove Board of Ed. B6 is a motion to approve the location agreement with Zar, short film, and the Cedar Grove Board of Education. B7 is a motion to approve the following resolution to commend the efforts of the board members throughout New Jersey during School Board Recognition Month.
It's an entire month.
It is, it's an, I thought it used to be a week, but...
It's a month.
But let me just say, we do not do it for the recognition during that month.
No.
But we appreciate it. B8 is a motion to approve the following donations to the Memorial Middle School for the 1920 school year. Any discussions?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Ms. Amiga.
Yes.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.[1607.04]
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. From the Office of the Superintendent of Schools, under personnel, we have our superintendent report this evening. We're always excited to have that.
That's great to hear.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And this is the first one of the new year, it's January, right? Okay. So what's going on?
What is going on? Well, as I said here, brr, the bear is back, but of course, it's January, so it's supposed to be cold.
That doesn't make it better.
No. Although the skier in me does appreciate the winter months, so hang in there, folks, it'll be spring before you know it. But I say, you know, in a silly mood, that the CGSD is heating up and it truly is. There's so many great things going on. You know, we often get hung up on the things that drag us down, you know, delays in the construction project and curriculum rewrites, things that kind of wear on you, but after all, it's a school, there's so much excitement and energy, it is dynamic. And not just for the kids. This past Monday, and I feature that a little bit in this opening monologue here, we're talking about the ed camp, and we've got some descriptions there of the courses that our staff studied this Monday when the students were home on MLK Day. Our staff was here as a full day in service, learning about all kinds of things. And the link there will take you to some of that. But before I get to that, let's talk about something new and exciting we're bringing back here at Cedar Grove High School. Prior to when I was principal, back in 2009-10, we had talked about doing a college fair and there was very little interest at the time in having one on our own campus. Well, we've gotten over that. And so Mr. Mangili and his team will be bringing back the college fair right here to Cedar Grove High School. So mark your calendars for March 4th. We have an exciting list already of colleges and universities that have committed to being here with us in our own Cedar Grove High School gym. Mr. Mangili's team will be pushing out through social media and he blasts more specific information about how to get involved and at the very least participate. So we're really excited about that. So let's talk a bit about what's going on here in the district. Of course, we have access to the Friday folder and as we will do every month now through the end of the year, hopefully it won't have to last that long, is provide a construction update. And you can see for yourself that while we're making progress in some areas, we are getting bogged down in others. But I do want to point out, as this update says, at this point, we're concentrating the board and myself and our team on getting it right, not just getting it done. And at the end of the day, when spring and summer rolls around and the project's complete, that's all people are really going to care about. You know, as a taxpayer, myself, I know that you've committed a lot of money to this project and so I've committed and this board has to getting it done right. And we're not gonna stop until we do. So thank you for your patience as we work through the delays. As I always do, I like to feature some exciting things going on on each of our campuses. This month, starting with North End, all kinds of great things going on with our youngest learners in pre-K and K. We've made a concerted effort, as I've said in the past, to focus on voice and choice and, you know, learner-active types of learning experiences. And so what we do is feature those activities here. So take your time, read through them. The looks on the kids' faces is really most of what you need to know about what's going on in our schools. Again, North End's got some great things going on where our kids in second grade are diving deeper into Moby Max. And so our teachers are celebrating those accomplishments and the classes that have had the most success with Moby Max were recognized with a party and some emoji, you know, Backpack Buddies. And just, you know, you have to take time to recognize your efforts, the kids' efforts, you know, let them take pride in their work and our teachers do a great job of celebrating their accomplishments. Again, at North End, we have this really new, and I wanted to mention it, the sensory path that we've created in the hallway space at North End and allows for some of our youngest students with some sensory issues to learn things on the sensory pathway, such as confidence and motor steel development, balance, hand-eye coordination, spatial awareness. And if you have a chance to serve as a volunteer at North End, you'll see the sensory path on the floor. You may even see some of our youngest learners interacting with it and really learning about themselves and how to develop in these important skills. Such good stuff going on. Here we have Ms. Daniele's class doing some science work about adaptation and having the kids build, you know, role-playing as zoologists, you know, these animal prints. It's pretty cool stuff, check that out. Other stuff going on, of course, Mrs. Martin is always so proud of her students' work and loves to share and make contributions to the newsletter. And here we have some winter fun going on. We've got, you know, it's not just, you know, the snowmen themselves and women, if you will, but rather it's the technique that she's, you know, guiding these kids to learn. You know, we're talking about using different kinds of materials, tissue papers and paints and chocks to let these kids create. And these are some of the works of art that the students themselves have put together, which I'm always impressed with. Just take a look at some of the work they've done. And to allow you to do that, I include that in the newsletter each month. Thank you, Cindy. What's going on at the middle school? All kinds of things. Yes, there is direct instruction, yes, there's a role that direct instruction plays, but project-based learning, again, learner-active, you know, team building, these are the things that we're most proud of and we love highlighting in the newsletter. So in social studies, we've got kids creating projects and perhaps more importantly, doing presentations, building confidence, learning how to speak publicly. Sixth-grade STEM is always a hit, they've always got hands-on activities, problem-solving initiatives going on, so we cite some work there. Language arts, again, doing more presentations and projects, getting our kids moving around the room, working with partners, team building, collaborating, it's good stuff. Here we have some seventh and eighth grades, stuff going on, more presentations and projects. We talk a bit about Mr. Potts and Mr. Kendia's esports club we've mentioned earlier. These guys, by the way, have built the computers that are being used for the club, so I thought I'd highlight that, it's kind of cool. And the eighth-grade ELA team, again, has kids not just creating, but using technology to do so, Google Slides and so on, using the proper citations in MLA format, things that they need to move through high school and beyond. While speaking of the high school, lots of stuff going on there. Again, kids engaging in scientific inquiry, you know, stretching their minds, being creative, using their imagination to draw conclusions, developing their own labs based on some of the content they're learning in that direct instruction session. That's some really cool stuff. We got honors bio featured here this time around, some, you know, different renditions of the classic starch in IKI lab when I was a science teacher years ago. You know, we've, those diffusion labs never get old, and so I thought that was kind of neat to highlight that. Our SAT prep course is really going gangbusters this year. We have over 60 students enrolled in the program. I may have made a mention here that over the years, enrollment in the SAT prep has gone up and so has our SAT scores. Coincidence? I don't know, you decide. What else is happening? Well, Mr. Mangili and his team recognize the efforts of our students who participated in deck the halls. If you've been through the high school, you'll know that the winning hallway is still in place, still looks great. There's such talented contributions, it's so cool, go check it out if you can. Make sure you sign into the main office first, of course. Our teacher, I have to get these names straight, our young teachers keep getting married and having children and now her name is Mrs. Bentley, okay? So you'll see her running around the halls and running clubs and of course, getting our art showcase in order. Read about the things they're highlighting there. And certainly, last but not least, congratulations to Owen Posnet for his selection as the Student of the Month by the music department. Thank you.
Got a great stuff happening.
Yes, it's fantastic. The SAT class is something that we do.
It is.
And there's no fee?
There is no fee, we do it either zero period or now we have an afternoon slot opened up.
Oh, really?
We do, and kids like to have that option.
So is it, so it used to be that there were, there were two mornings, like, you know, zero, two zero periods, so now is it you can choose two afternoon also instead or?
Correct.
Well, that's great.
Yep.
And most schools don't do it, don't offer this for free?
I don't really know what most other schools are doing, but we have found that this program's been a great success and I think, we think moving that option to the afternoon has been well received.
Great.
Well, as a parent, I used to drag her kid to the zero period to get there, I like the idea of other options, if possible, because that's not for the faint of heart for some people, it's just not possible. So that's great, that's fantastic.
That's fantastic.
So the 60 is, how much of it is in the afternoon versus the morning, do you know?
I don't know, but I'm sure the high school has-
I bet they have it, yeah. I'm just kind of curious, I mean, because obviously sports plays a role in this.
It does, a lot of kids have things to do after school, so they're forced to be there in the morning, but I'll find out.
I'm just curious how it's working out. So do we have, I know in the past, there's been two teachers, right, generally for zero period, so do we now have four? Is that how it's working or I'm asking too many questions and-
No, you're asking, yeah.
I'm just curious.
I don't exactly know how many we have teaching, but I'll let you know about that as well.
Kind of wondering how that went. I think it's great, it's a great program, so. Alrighty, moving on, I'm gonna stop asking questions and have the answers to. Alrighty, under personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through S12, please?
So moved.
Second.
S1 is a motion to approve the superintendent's report. S2 is a motion to affirm the superintendent's report on harassment, intimidation, and bullying from January 7th. S3 is a motion to approve the contract of Michael J. Featherman, Superintendent of Schools for the 1920 school year through 2000, through the 2023-24 school year. S4 is a motion to approve Jesse Lab, High School History Maternity Leave Replacement Teacher, the rate listed. S5 is a motion to approve Kayla Amato for lunch duty. S6 is a motion to approve the revised resignation date of Augustine Prater. S7 is a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the education and law enforcement officials, school critical incident drills, and memorandum of understanding. S8 is a motion to approve the following as a school volunteer. S9 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. S10 is a motion to approve the following leaves of absence. S11 is a motion to approve the following students for classroom observation. And S12 is a motion to retroactively approve Allison Horace for after-school Sunday planning and training at the rate listed. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes, under contracts, can I have a motion for S13?
So moved.
Second.
S13 is a motion to approve the following contract for special education student as listed for the 1920 school year. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda.